Thank you. Anytime I can do something, I think really will help us out in the long term. I'm going to bring up a subject here that's real sensitive, but we need to take in consideration the fact these folks right here, they oppose any kind of commercial development over here. They always have. One individual who's a personal friend of mine has always talked to me about it. And surely as soon as we start talking about it, it's going to affect the marketing of the property. Is that once we put it in somebody's hands, they're going to oppose any development in here. That's going to be one of our problems.
Extending the street does not necessarily...
It helps the community, in my opinion. It really does.
And it doesn't...
Makes it easy to get out of the community.
And it doesn't kind of take that commercial development is going to take place there?
But what it does do for you, it offers more road frontage for development of individual properties in here beside the library. There's a location. I don't know if you want to put something there. It could be retained as a park or whatever, but it would open up a development opportunities to market this in the future and favor the property, in my opinion. It'll make it more valuable.
I mean, it could, but I think it would be up to a developer who would purchase it to make that determination. That's the way I would feel about it.
And you could put it upon the developer to build that road.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I live right there. I don't know that it's a pretty easy in-and-out neighborhood. I don't know that that argument would fly, but if anything, I'm just thinking, you know, the Shreve Street, Mert, and the Linear Park, there's a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic over there, and that's one of the reasons why we like the location for the library. And we talked initially about, you know, right now, the History Park, they don't really have parking facilities. They just have kind of gravel and grass where people park, maybe some shared parking in there. I don't know that another road right there is really conducive to the neighborhood. I mean, it's... When they close... I mean, we just closed West Virginia not too long ago. Now we're going to recreate another road a block down. I don't know. I don't...
I used West Virginia all the time. It was convenient to me, and I live in the neighborhood, and I used it as often as I could.
So I don't know. I would say I wouldn't want the city to move forward with that. Maybe, you know, if the developer or whoever bought it decided that that's the way they would want to configure it, we could talk about it at that time.
Well, I'm suggesting that it could be, might be, part of the process of building the library as a method of providing additional access to the library.
I like the idea of the extension of Charlotte Avenue as well, but I think I also agree with Rachel in terms of as a possibility for a developer to say, you know, this is something that we're thinking about, and this might fit into your plans as well.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility.
It could be a possibility.
It's a possibility. But I do believe we should move forward now, and I understand from, again, from Lindsay's materials, that Mr. Lashley has a, probably would still have their first right of refusal. Is that correct?
Yes, but we would approach him first to see if he's even interested.
And if not, I would...
If you want to market it.
But we don't... I mean, it's not worth what's on... What is it worth? What number would we put on it? Again, we'd have to get an appraisal.
We had an appraisal done back in 2000, and it might have been all the way back to 2006 or '07. We'd have to update it. So we do have a number. We did have a number, of course.
Is it zoned commercial?
It is zoned. We rezoned it.
Neighborhood?
Neighborhood residential, I believe it was.
Neighborhood residential.
So it could be residential.
Or neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood...
It was a mixed use.
So it could be residential, or it could be...
I believe it was a mixed use.
Mixed use.
Okay.
Mixed use. It was intended at that time to be a village, residential and commercial.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it was intended to be.
I'd urge an appraisal.
We definitely need an appraisal if we're going to move forward with anything.
We would need an appraisal for, with or without the property that the library could be built on. Because if we give part of it away for the library, then the size of the...
Well, you have the square footage anyway. You just take that off.
Oh, I think we're committed for the library.
Well, it depends on the approval of the voters' approval. I think we should sit with this until we know where the library is going, where the sales tax issue is going, and then if we can come back and visit this again. There is no immediate rush.
We may have people coming to us wanting to buy it, and if we get an appraisal now and then two years from now, we'd have to get another appraisal because it would be different, or even a year. People say, oh, that's a year old. We need to get another appraisal.
Well, I would like for us to, again, I would agree that we can wait until after the November election to find out whether or not we're moving forward with the 1 percent tax. If it does not pass, then I think we should ask the county, are they still interested in that piece of property? And if they're not going to build a library within, you know, designated period of time, five years or whatever, then I would say that we do need to move forward on an appraisal of the entire piece of property and start to market it. This is the time, I think, that people are going to be interested in doing some things here in Punta Gorda.
I would agree with that.
Well, depending on our price, we may already have a buyer, depending on what we're selling it for, so...
That's right.
I think we should wait until we... That's a good idea. Wait until the 1 percent, and we can know if we're committed for a library or not.
Agreed.
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 Okay. All right. Next, we're moving on to regarding discussion regarding used grease container storage locations. This is the Terry Tubbs portion of the show.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. Staff has started to receive complaints regarding decondition and/or location of spent oil containers. And sometimes they are shoved into a dumpster enclosure, which is fine if the enclosure is large enough for sanitation to still be able to maneuver the dumpster. However, if there's not enough room, there are situations where it creates another problem for sanitation, that they can't get the dumpster out, you know, and there have been times that they haven't even been able to service the dumpster. Other situations where the... They're just sitting outside. They are an eyesore. Depending on the type of restaurant, type of operation, will determines the size of container. The smaller ones where they just have the 55-gallon drums are for smaller operations, and then you've got the larger containers, which are more like the square boxes that are out there. And I can't...
So Terry, just quickly, because I'm not... I don't... I've never really worked in the restaurant industry. Do people... Does somebody come and dump this and...
The restaurant is responsible for getting the spent oil out of their oil fryers and pouring it into the container. Their EPA apparently does not regulate, you know, if they spill something or anything like that. I did contact the company, whose name was on most of the containers that we located, and that's where I got most of the specific information as to, you know, the containers that's on the back of, second page of the agenda cover, as to the size, how they are maintained. The containers that are stored outside are provided to the customers at no charge for the customer. If they opt to do the indoor storage, A, it's going to take a space inside of their kitchen area somewhere. Also, they are expensive, and the cost for that is borne then by the restaurant. So the company said that very few choose to have an indoor storage system, and they choose to have them outside. The company has...
Or they then... So the company comes and then empties them?
Yes. They actually have kind of like a pump-out hose, and they pump it directly from the container through the hose into their truck. So that when they do the emptying of them, it's a no-spill type situation where they don't have the concerns of the spills. If there's an issue with a leaking container, they will come replace that right away. If it's something that it just needs to be repaired because spent or something, then that can take a couple of weeks to get that accomplished. He said that there have been other municipalities in other areas that decided that they did want, didn't want to look at the spent containers outdoors. Said from the company's perspective, because of their method of extraction, which is out of the top of the container, he said a four-foot fence panels, something that... He said there are instances where restaurants pick up and leave, and there's their container, and they just go get it. He said if it's inside a concrete enclosure, then that might create a problem for them. But he said with a four-foot high fence panel around it, even if it's sitting against something, then the three sides of it, he said they can access it from the top, no problem. If they have to remove it, they can remove the side of the fence panel to get it out of there. So at this point, there are provisions in the code that prohibit structures being stored in yards. There's prohibitions or provisions for outdoor storage areas. Those have historically not been applied to these spent grease containers. They really hadn't been even considered during any of the reviews. But I guess maybe because we're thriving, there's more and more of them. And so it has come up as a concern. We've received the complaints, so looking for direction.
I mean, is there any health issue? Like, do they stink? Do they smell? Is it a fire hazard? I mean...
They do have an odor generally, if you get very close to them. As far as a fire hazard, I'm... I would think that if it was, that fire prevention would be taking steps towards that.
And maybe that's why the inside one is more expensive than the external one, possibly?
Possibly.
Would a four-foot fence, then, or a landscape screen, take care of the problem?
The four-foot fence, I think, would probably be the better option. Landscape screen, it's going to require, then, that the container be placed in an area where something can't...
They can't get to it.
Yeah. And that would be kind of an ongoing landscape maintenance issue, then, as well.
For the business space.
Kim?
In my mind, I'm a visual person. I'm picturing dumpster hides and fences for oil, and, I mean, there has to be a way that cities usually deal with all this so that we can get everything into, you know, common areas that are, or something, because otherwise we're just going to have dumpster hides and hides and covers and little...
Maybe they have murals on them.
Yeah. And... I mean, isn't there some way? I mean, big city, and not that we're a big city, but there has to be a way to do that.
And that's kind of what we're looking for, is the direction. The current land development regulations require, you know, the hides to exist for all new development, and obviously, now that we're aware of this situation, it would be something that we would provide for at the time we're reviewing a new development. However, all of these conditions exist on, you know, sites that are already developed, and so it kind of creates situations where we're on the wrong end of it trying to fix the problem after the fact.
Right, right. Because, you know, I mean, downtown especially, you know, we have a lot of restaurants, and a lot of them are right next to each other, so maybe some of them can share.
They may.
They could.
Tom?
Have we had dialogue with the restaurant owners about this?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
No, have not as of yet.
I think we need to have a conversation with them before we... I think we need to gather some additional information before we vote on something here that may not be appropriate.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea.
Some more fact-finding, what other cities do, what the restaurants would like to see, and some more options excluding mural, or maybe including murals.
Yeah, I agree that it does appear to be an issue. It's how to solve the issue is what we need to think a little bit more about.
It'd be nice to have their input, because we're going... We'll get it, whether we do it before or after.
Right, right.
Yes, we will.
And even with the common areas, you know, we think it's a great idea, but then the person that's closest to the common area is upset because they don't want it in their backyard, and they don't want to have to look at it, and...
Or they're carrying the oil. The people that are far away have to carry the oil the furthest, and, I mean, I don't know enough about it.
Well, I mean, even with the dumpsters, I'm saying, the common area dumpsters.
Oh, yeah.
The people closest to it say, well, why is it this close to my place? Why isn't it over there by, closer to their place? So even though, you know, sometimes...
Didn't they ever live in a condo?
In this particular case here, where we see that the, basically, the trash is overflowing, do we have anything regarding overflowing trash?
It's everywhere.
That may have been on the day. It could have been pickup day or something, when that picture happened to be snapped.
The trash at Sunloft always smells horrible.
Oh, yeah, that does smell terrible.
Whenever you walk by there, it is horrible.
It is horrible.
So now we need fresheners, air fresheners in the dumpsters?
It is horrible.
I don't know what they do, but that is the smelliest place.
They need to increase the collections.
Yep.
That's a private sector.
I wrote a letter to the owner.
Okay.
As a citizen.
Did you get a response?
Not yet.
Okay. Next, we have minor code amendment relating to window signs.
Okay. Yes.
To the right item.
I heard a yes. Is there any more yeses?
Do you need anything else?
Second.
Yeah. Didn't Subway have the same problem when they had their graphics up? Subway had some national, like, every month they had something that they were supposed to put in their window?
I think we did run into the 33 percent per pane issue with Subway. We've run into it with several people. And when we started, we actually, Medicine Shop had made a request to put signage in those bottom panes, because they're in the same shopping area, and the literal reading of the code wouldn't allow it, and obviously, write-down, this is obviously put up without approval. But so we're looking at situations, saying, okay, it exists. It's something that we can still keep them within 33 percent of the overall without it being per individual pane, and give them a little more flexibility as to placement of the sign and how that is done. So that's why we had recommended a minor amendment.
I'd like to recommend that we move forward on this.
I agree.
Yes. Do you need the vote?
No, because you will consent eventually.
Okay.
We're just going to move forward.
With the changing new language. Okay. Next, we have discussion regarding clarification of the term "service station" as reference in the LDRs.
Yeah, this came up. There is a new auto parts store that is planning on opening in town, and they indicated that as part of their overall operation, they install some of the small parts on vehicles or change out batteries and that sort of thing. So therefore, they're a service station. And as a service station, they wanted a changeable copy sign. And historically, when the code has talked about service stations, it was talking about gasoline fueling stations that had associated minor service attached to it. And so for clarification, I had also pulled out the areas within the code where we reference "service station," but we don't define what a service station is, and pulled the antiquated definition of a service station that was in place in 2005. And I think we probably would be well-served to provide a proper definition for what a service station is, be consistent with the use of the term "service station" or "fueling station" within, throughout the code, because sometimes we call them "auto fueling stations." Sometimes they're "service stations," so it's kind of a mixed bag as to how it's referred to. And I think with the clarification, it would reduce the ability also to challenge the changeable copy sign provision that is in Article 11.
And you really just want the changeable for gasoline, right?
That was...
Because of price changes?
Yeah, that was the intent.
I'm fine with this.
Me, too.
Yeah, I just have a question you have in here about automobiles and not for trucks. And I read that, and I thought, I drive a truck. So it's like...
Where specifically?
It's down on the... Before, when you start to have number one, two, and three, it's in the middle of the paragraph where it says, "Dispense at retail principally for automobiles and not for trucks."
I believe it was probably referring to heavy equipment-type trucks.
Eighteen-wheeler.
Yeah, eighteen-wheeler-type trucks, yeah. And as I said, that's antiquated language that does need to be updated, but it was something that I could at least reference that was quick and easy. Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay. Recommendation from city officers. Howard?
I do have one. Got a call from Brian Armstrong yesterday, and he received the letter, you know, that we sent regarding, where's our grant funds for the well fill testing and permitting? And he said, you know that that was tied to the interconnect. I said, yeah, I know. Said, but you budgeted the money, and we sent you, received the letter saying that the money is in the budget, so where's the money? He said, well, you know it's tied to the interconnect, so it's still tied to the interconnect. We're still negotiating our next meeting next week.
Good.
So the check is not in the mail?
The check is not in the mail.
Did you tell him that wasn't acceptable?
The check is not in the mail.
We're continuing to negotiate.
Continuing to negotiate. He'll be at the next meeting.
Good.
But he knows that we expect the money.
Can he bring it to the next meeting?
Just keep moving forward.
Yep, keep negotiating.
Keep negotiating.
Keep negotiating.
Keep swimming.
City attorney.
Nothing further.
City clerk.
Okay. Under boards and committees, starting with announcement of vacancies, we have a continuing vacancy as an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have an unexpired term for a regular seat on the Code Enforcement Board. We have a continuing vacancy for an alternate member on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. We have a vacancy for a regular member on the Punta Gorda Isles for Now Advisory Committee. Under nominations, we have an unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Jim McClary has expressed an interest in serving, and as he is the only applicant at this time, we would like to nominate and appoint. At this time, you can do so.
Nominate and appoint Mr. McClary.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to nominate and appoint Mr. McClary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hear unanimously.
Also, under nominations, we have an unexpired term as an alternate on the Building Board. Mr. Brox has expressed an interest in serving, and as we only have one interested party, if you'd like to nominate and appoint, you can do so.
I'd like to nominate and appoint.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to nominate and appoint Mr. Brox as the Building Board alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four to one.
And I just want to explain my, it's not I have nothing against Mr. Brox, but I think we should maintain or keep open some of our nominations, even though we only have one person. It seems that we should be trying to get more people into the pipes, you know, into the whole linkage. So that's, that was the reason. I have nothing against Mr. Brox. I think he'll make a good person. I just would like for us to consider, as we look to these in the future, that we try to get more people instead of just appointing and nominate, you know, nominating and appointing at the same time.
Well, she keeps applications on file for people that have applied, that maybe didn't get what they wanted or something of that sort. And if you wait too long, the boards have to meet, and then they don't have the members to have a quorum. So it's kind of a catch-22. And this is the one, I'm not sure if he's a city resident or not, but we've tried to, we've tried to really, I stood up at the chamber meeting.
Mr. Brox is a member.
Okay, yes. They're not, but the Building Board is one of those that is open to non-city residents, and we don't, we didn't get people to apply. We're trying to get the word out. Okay, next, Karen.
Okay. Under nominations, also, we have four eligible applicants for a regular seat on the Code Enforcement Board. If someone could nominate.
I see three. Where, who am I missing? For code enforcement?
We have John Birch, who is eligible for reappointment. We have William Ambrose, Jim Stevens, and Trudy Baxter.
Oh, and Steve, Jim Stevens. Thank you.
If someone would nominate, did I... Sorry.
Will, yeah.
Nominate all.
Nominate all.
So back when we appointed John, that's all that he had left on that term? He filled an unexpired term? Must have been.
I don't have when he was first appointed on here. But, yeah, his current term expires October 25th.
Okay.
Okay. We do have an unexpired term on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. Michael McDonald has expressed an interest in serving. He is the only applicant, but right now he does serve as an alternate on the board. If you would like to nominate and appoint, you can do so.
And we have the two members that live in the neighborhood, or is he one of those? No, he wouldn't be a materialist.
No, I think that's Jason and Julie.
Jason and Julie, okay.
I'd like to move to nominate and appoint Mr. McDonald.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to appoint Mr. McDonald as a regular member of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hear unanimously.
Okay, continuing with nominations, we have an unexpired term for an at-large member on the Police Officers Pension Board. We did receive a last-minute application this morning, just before the start of the council meeting. So we do have two applicants. If you would like to nominate, I did not have a chance to distribute Mr. Cummings' resume to you, since he turned it in right before the meeting started, but Mr. Adam Cummings has expressed an interest in serving.
Can we nominate all?
So we have two eligible... That's correct.
Nominate all, second, yeah.
Thank you.
So then his application will be in the next agenda packet?
In the next package.
Thank you.
And then we have the unexpired term on the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee, and we do have two eligible applicants for that seat. If you'd like to nominate, opposed?
Nominate all.
Second.
So just for the record, it's Tom Hamilton and...
Bob Peterson.
Bob Peterson.
Right. Mr. Peterson's resume came in after the agenda packet was distributed.
So we've nominated both of them, yes.
With regard to Mr. Novak resigning, I'd like to suggest that we get him an appropriate certificate of appreciation. He's done a wonderful job for the city.
He really has.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Who does that?
Karen. I spoke to Councilmember Kavanaugh about that. We will prepare that for a presentation at the next council meeting and invite Mr. Novak.
That would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
That would be very appropriate.
And that's all I have?
Thank you. Yes?
We were getting ready to do the 300 block of Duren Street, the worst street in the city. You know the 300 block of Duren Street?
Yep.
We were going, we're going to get ready to do the water and the sewer, mainly the sewer, and then re-brick it. We were going to start it right away. We did canvass the neighborhood, and, you know, the neighborhood I live in gets particular about Halloween. So they don't like anything going on for Halloween, and so they would like to put off the work till after the New Year, and we're okay with that. Everybody on board with that. We did canvass the neighborhood.
We need to have Halloween.
And I hope we don't spring a leak between now and then, but...
I think it gives us even more time to plan for a community bricking project.
Well, yeah, that's what you're looking for. Okay, so Rick and Mark and Tom, if you're listening in, we'll do it after the New Year.
Right when all the people come back.
Well, I'm telling you, my neighborhood is...
It's a catch-22.
It is a catch-22.
Endurance is kind of quiet after that, you know?
But we, yes.
It's busy during Halloween.
We will, we will abide by the residents' request.
Okay. Okay. We're set. Okay. That's it.
Okay, under policy and legislation, we will be back here at 1:00?
2:00.
No, first we'll be back here at 1:00 in the hallway for Ward Schnepp. Schnepp.
Schnepp.
Then we'll be back here at 2:00 for our lobby workshop with Capital Access. We'll be here and do a presentation. You're all invited to come and give your input, so maybe here till 5:00, 5:30 tonight. Could be a long day, full day worth of work.
There we go.
I think that's all that I have. Councilmember comments, Nancy?
Looking forward to seeing you all for the Schnepp welcoming ribbon-cutting. I do have a question. I think it's might be directed to Howard and maybe to Brickini. When I've driven on some of the brick streets, I see grass coming up, growing up along the curbs, and it looks unsightly, and it's...
We had a discussion about that.
Yeah, and I just, I, I actually went down another street, not intentionally to look for grass, but I saw this grass growing up, and it's like, it doesn't look like Punta Gorda. Unless that's...
For those who live in the area and those who've been around a long time, we find the grass part of the historic area. And we can certainly, if you'd like, do a roundup routine on the brick streets, but we have shied away from that. We have another member who lives in the historic area. What do you think?
Where, where are you talking about?
Oh, I was, the first time I saw it, I was driving down Gil Street.
Gil, it's there.
And I saw, but then I was driving down another one recently, and I saw this grass growing up along the, in between, it's coming up in between the bricks and...
Yes.
And all this, and it just...
Yes, it does.
Doesn't look like our tidy, little neat Punta Gorda, to me, but I, I just felt like, I know you mentioned to me this is what it is, but I thought I'd bring it up because it's like, it just appears unsightly to me. Maybe I'm just one person.
The historic area is a scruffy neighborhood.
We are.
I was trying to find the right word, but you're right.
We are, we're a scrappy bunch. We really are. We're an eclectic bunch.
So do we mow the grass?
Yes, we do. There's actually three of us who live in the neighborhood.
And we don't like roundup.
We are on camera.
I don't, I don't, is there any other feeling on that?
It's for the Halloween ambiance coming up.
That would take some manpower.
Kim?
No, just don't forget about the Oktoberfest this weekend. If you didn't get enough of polka last weekend, there's more to come. See you out there.
Tom?
Yes, thank you. As we move beyond the Peace River Wildlife's request of Grand Harbor to pursue a variance, I would like to thank Joe Boff and his company for allowing the center to remain on its property while the center continues to work with the city to find a permanent location that will accommodate their needs.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I will giddy, giddy what Tom has said. I think Mr. Boff has been a very good friend to the city in many ways, and I think the zoning board meeting just put a, a negative pall on that relationship, and I would hope that it would be more positive again in the future, and for the Wildlife Center as well. Do want to welcome Schnepp into our community, and I was going to suggest, we have this beautiful graphic poster here. Maybe that should go up here in City Hall as it's part of our, right here in our chambers. Right there, so we could look at it.
Sure.
I think that would be very nice.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, citizens' comments. Please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Howard's got to go to a meeting. Citizens' comments? None?
Now, this is a first.
Wow. Okay, we are adjourned.
See you later.